Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting on September 12th, 2024, of the Historic Preservation Architectural Review Board of Sag Harbor. Let's open the meeting by saluting the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, to the board. Have we had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting? Does anyone have any edits, changes, or comments on it?
I already turned mine in.
Okay. So then, if you've changed yours, you've turned them in. When did you do that?
Week ago, or whenever they first came out.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments?
No.
Okay. So I'll take a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting of August 6th.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're entering into a continued public hearing on 7 Marston Street. Please come up and represent that. I guess we can combine this and do 7 and 9 successively.
Denise Shern, attorney for the office. I'm wondering if you'd mind if we start with 9 first, then 2, 7, 8.
That's fine.
Do we have a lawyer?
She's on.
Yes, I'm online. Hi, everyone. Liz Vale, village attorney, I'm online.
Hi, Liz.
Hi.
So. Let's, if we can start with, it's A1-. The sods, the trees that were made in the last meeting. These are the properties on Marston Street that we talked about at the last hearing. We have four parcels tonight, we'd like to go over two of them. We felt that rushing and trying to make four of them perfect was too much. So we tried to make two of them perfect. And we'll come back with those for tonight. So let's start with number nine. This is the property of that little. Do you want to just start with 5 or 7?
9, 9's back part of the flag lot.
So 9 is the flag lot, which is the second flag lot from Division Street. So as you recall, there's four properties, two in the front, two in the back, two on Marston, two in the back. This is the second lot on Marston. As you go down Marston for the school, and then the lot behind it. So right now, we're starting with the lot behind it.
So do you have a, just a site plan or landscaping plan so these, so the participants can? I'm sorry, the guests.
Oh, perfect, okay. This is the revised landscaping plan for this site. At the last meeting, we had a pretty simplified landscaping plan that was a little bit too simple. And it just had essentially evergreen trees around the perimeter of the property. This has been modified to incorporate quite a few native species, quite a few additional trees. And it also showed you on that plan which of the trees that are on the property that are brand trees are going to remain. So you can see that in red. The red that points to sort of the, you know, trees. Those are the trees that are the brand trees that are on the site that will be preserved. There is one that's just too close to the house that will have to be removed. But I think this plan better reflects what their board likes to see. Did you guys have a seat?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
In terms of, yeah, we need a landscaping, I think, of all the landscaping.
This is the, that's the front.
Yeah.
It's probably what over this is. These are.
Juniper's.
Alternated.
Only hedges. Am I reading this right?
We have some tree myrtles that we put here.
Oh, is that the CN?
Yes, and some sugar maples. And I think those are the two the two trees that we had.
So five trees, one.
There are.
You can see that.
There's a, there's a count here at the bottom.
For the
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
At 10 to 12 feet height, and then maple.
It looks like seven trees, it towards the middle.
Seven canopy trees.
Canopy trees, right.
Exactly right.
Which I think is something that we had expressed.
Yes.
Wanting to have more of, yeah.
Yeah, at the last hearing, we didn't actually have any canopy trees because, so these are all new. Last meeting, as I said, we just really had a perimeter of the property just to impose it for privacy purposes. But now we've really made an effort to landscape the property itself. It also has revised renderings. If I could hand those up. You can just.
I see, so this shape.
It's like this.
So if you if you look at the first page of the document that we had compared to the properties. Now, what you can see is the best teaching on the property. The last set of renderings at the beginning really didn't give you a setting for where the house situated. We didn't. So how we found that fell. On the house itself, there were a few changes that were made to this house. Most of the changes were made during the last round of comments. So on this first page, there's really not too much to come out that's changed in terms of.
I don't remember, I, I was at the last meeting, but not the very first meeting that this was presented. And so I'm just looking at the rear of the property where you have the two patio decks off of the back. This page. The last page.
Yes.
I don't know whether there was any discussion regarding how that impacts the neighbors in terms of if you're sitting up on top of that or standing on top of either one of those decks, how that affects the neighbors.
Okay. We talked about, I don't know if we talked about it at the first meeting. The last meeting, we talked about privacy issues. And the board didn't see concern that there would be a privacy issue on this site. Just to step back from the grid of the property line. The distance of.
But if you're, if you're clearing a lot and you're putting in these other trees that are going to be green giants, but how big are the green giants when you put them in?
Those are going to be 14 to 16.
Okay.
And you'll see that in the column, on the last column of that.
Okay, got it, I'm sorry. Forgive me, I'm just trying to understand.
The distance is also very far because the lot is so big. You know, these can be 200 feet from the next house. So far. And it's no, there really is no privacy issues.
And the height of those decks, just out of curiosity?
Well, they'll be right as, so ten or eleven feet. They could be off the, you know, to the second floor, fourth out.
Was this one of the renderings where the hip roof was reduced?
We changed it.
Right, okay.
So now, this is a gable roof.
Right.
Remember Val? So we took his advice and we made numerous changes to the plans. And on this house as well as one of the others, we changed from the hip to the gable roof. Which I think fits great.
And could you just, for the record, remind me, what is the square footage for this house?
It's somewhere around 5.
It's 5.
Yeah.
So our first floor is 2617, next door 2535.
So it's 51.
5,062.
5,062.
Anything about 9 you want to present to us in addition to this? Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea.
Just want to check out, but for the side entry of the property, we got rid of the, the glass window that was next to the door.
The side light.
Side light for symmetry, for requested. But that's the only change on that side. So that's a 611.
We changed the stairs.
So, and then if we can go to.
The front elevation.
8511, please. This is where we modified the stair tower. So if you look at the one above, you'll see the double windows, stair tower. If you look below, it's been pushed back, and there's just a single pane, a single window there.
Also, several, like exposed out of the doors.
And we got rid of the, we opened eyebrow, an eyebrow, eyebrow window up.
The eyebrow, you know, so change the front door.
And the front door has been changed as well. That was a double door last time out, it's a single door with the side light. Just so that it matches better with the light, the windows are above it, make it more smudged.
We also changed the whole windows. This is the previous.
Previous.
So the.
Yeah, this is the previous.
Yes, so this is from the.
That is the old.
Says previous on the bottom.
Can we see the note?
Yep, it's right on the bottom.
Okay, so the door is different. And then also, you see all the windows on the first floor are different. We changed all the windows.
And again, the front of the house faces inward.
The driveway, toilet, fence. So this is a flag lot.
Right.
So nobody's really seen it. But it's still a really nice house.
Just out of curiosity, what's your, what's your assessment of these changes that you've done in response to our comments?
I like them the most, why? I, especially on this house, this house, I think changing if you look above, the doors, the windows, I think goes with the look of the whole house. I think changing to the single door was good. I even like the stair tower because now it looks like it's all part of it, it's not staying, standing out. So I think that also goes in, in with this type of a house. And I think the roof actually looks really good. So overall, I was very happy with the way and I, and he didn't even charge me that. So I feel it was really good.
Yeah, okay.
I just have one question. I'm sorry, I'm chock full of questions, but the front door, you have that side panel.
Yes.
And it's not to allow light into the foyer?
Yes, but also is, because you see there's two windows above.
Yeah.
To kind of carry it down with two windows.
Okay, and you like that better than?
Yeah.
A bigger door would, little side panels on each side, okay.
We actually drew it like that and then we changed it.
And then you changed it, okay, so I'm playing catch up, so.
No problem.
Okay, so we've looked through the front, let's go through the changes on each side.
So then, the east side, we just put that actually.
I say east, that's the front.
We did the south elevation.
Like the government, those two panes.
See, we just used the glass elevation.
It's more, it doesn't. It's on a lot of windows, but that's the back.
That's the back.
That's the west.
But that's why I asked the question about the trees, because you can have that many windows in the back.
Is your elevation of the house again?
So where you can't, they won't be able to see each other.
The change.
But here, we added, if you look, the window panes in all the windows as opposed to above. So it just continues that theme of being a little more traditional.
So divided like those, and also you can see the change in the shape of the response elevation spot.
Do you know what the change in the ridge height, roof ridge height has been going from?
No, the ridge height's the same.
Same?
Yeah.
It is, okay.
32.
32.6.
One more to last, 35. Yeah, the architects thought we weren't going to be able to do it, but we were.
Okay. And then the other two elevations?
I think we've.
We did one.
Let's see, let's see, that's the.
The front, the back, and the side.
We do both sides.
I mean, both.
This one side.
That's it.
811, the north side. It's on the right side.
They stay the same.
So the changes that can see here. The gable change is, as you can see here.
I like the doors, I'm sorry.
Everything is a roof change.
It's, you see, it's a roof.
Yes.
So that.
The south. But other than that, there changes windows.
So that's because it's now a gable roof as opposed to a hip roof. So we had to add that on the end.
Okay.
So we added.
Now I see it.
Right here. Because that's coming through them.
Well, this is a public hearing. Let's open this up to see if the public has any comments or questions, either here or remotely. My understanding is that we do.
Yes, the, the ARB does have the authority to rule on the volume and mass of structures.
So.
Pursuant to the code.
Yeah, respectfully, these houses, these 5,000 square foot houses, for them talk along the historic district, they're out of proportion to other houses in the neighborhood. And, you know, respectfully ask that it be something to make their houses.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, how do you need to do the?
Eileen Rosenberg.
Hi, good evening. Eileen Rosenberg at Tan Carver Street. I guess I'm a little focused on the landscaping since I was working on the tree preservation legislation. Unfortunately, I couldn't hear Ms. Shawn very well, and it's very hard to see the plans online. How many trees are being removed?
Well, you mean over 18 inches or are you saying?
Yes.
There's only one, one brand tree or a tree that's over 18 inches DBH that would have to be removed as a result of its location. Because it's, it's the right side.
I'm sorry, do you, for whatever reason, I cannot hear Denise. It's just so broken up.
I'll try to be louder. That's okay. There's only one grand tree on the property that's over 18 inches DBH that has to be removed. And that's because it's right next to the building. But the other tree there on the property will be preserved.
Okay, in terms of the seven canopy trees that are going to be planted, do you know what the DBH of those trees will be?
I know the height of the.
I mean, at planting, not, not potential growth.
I don't know, we've been at. So we're 10 to 12, but I don't know what that means, or is it meaning, sorry.
And what is the size of the property?
The lot itself is.
Should be here.
1,296, it's .8792 acres.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
The size of the lot is 38,283 square, 86, 96 square feet, and it's .8792 acres.
Well, 38,000 square feet, I know my property is only like 10,000. And we have four more trees, I'm wondering if there's some consideration to planting more trees. Seven canopy trees in addition to the other bushes, et cetera. Doesn't seem like a lot for the size of that particular property. So that would be my comment.
I, I would just urge you, Eileen, to look at the plan. Because there's a lot of trees too, you know, it's a pretty intense vegetation plant, so I don't know how many more canopy trees they can fit. But I would urge you to take a look at it. It's on, it's on the screen right now.
Okay, I, I, as I said, it's sort of hard to see online. Perhaps if I make, you know, go to the office and look at a copy, it'll be a little bit more clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
And yep, anyone else with a comment?
Yes. Thank you. I also want to second what Eileen has talked about because this is almost an acre of property. Seven canopy trees is so insufficient with the proportion and size of that house. With all due respect, it really should be many more trees. And although only one tree is being removed, I'm kind of shocked by that. More than 18 inches. It is a burden piece of property. This home is considerably larger than anything in the neighborhood, absolutely anything. And so the other vegetation that you suggest does not have this height, and it does not have a canopy consideration. The heat of this house, you know, if, if the idea is to make something aesthetically pleasing within a huge house, which there are going to be five of them if you include number 12, we need more trees. Sorry, but we really do, and I hope you will consider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other people waiting to speak?
I don't see anybody else.
Okay. Okay, I, I do kind of agree, let me just, with, with what's being said. This is not my standard, I usually go to my board members first and ask your opinion, so let me not deviate from that. Do you have any thoughts or comments, Michelle?
Um, I do. First, I'd like to say, I really do like the design of the house. And I think the changes that we recommended or suggested at the last meeting, I think the house looks really nice. I do have concerns, as everyone else does, about the size, even if it was 1,000 square feet smaller. I think it's a really big house. But I do like the design, as I said. And I would have to agree also with the number of canopy trees. I'd like to see more canopy trees if possible, because it is such a big lot. It's almost two acres, right?
No, no, no.
It's a one.
7.
Oh, .87, oh, I'm sorry, but even so, I think that would be a nice addition to the, the design that you've created.
Judith?
Well, I would say almost exactly the same thing. I really like the design of the house, and I like what you've done with it. It's so much better than when you first came in. And I think of the houses, of course, I haven't seen what you've done to the others, but of, of your houses, this is the one I like best. And I also agree that these pictures, of course, I know it's a rendering and everything, but they make it look like you're in Arizona or something, because it's so, the sky is so big and open. And so that speaks to more canopy trees, as we have all just been saying. And my big concern again is the size and the scale, massing in this little street in the historic district. It just doesn't fit at that size.
But these properties are dramatically larger. They're four times your average size. So the code limits it dramatically because you could build a 2,500 to 3,000 square foot house on a tiny little postage stamp. If you proportionally enlarge it, this would be 10,000 square feet or plus. So these are really not that big considering the size of the property. If you would stand back and look at it on a big view, the house, it's only 60 feet wide. It's tiny, the, the land is 200 feet wide. So, you know, a lot of times when you look at these houses in the village, the house takes up most of the width of the property. But here, you're going to have a whole third here and a whole third here. The house is, looks small to the comparison of the size of the land.
Well, again, though, in Sag Harbor, you don't have giant lots and giant houses. You have little tiny lots and little tiny houses, or you have captain's row houses. But on a little lane like Marston Street, you don't have these big lots and big houses.
But it's not, you know, these are size lots that they are. I mean, they could have divided this. You know, when you divided this, you could have made this 10 lots and we could put 10 houses. And then they all would have been proportionally smaller, but yes, they would be larger.
Would that be such a bad idea?
You can't. It's a little late to plan.
I know. That's what I would prefer.
Then they would be much grander to the size of the property. These are extremely not just proportional, but I think, and they're all within the codes, you know.
That I understand.
So if the code really felt that they should be smaller, they would change the codes. You know, we're well under the height, couple of feet under the height. We could go over three feet taller, which would obviously make them look larger. We purposely did that, and we purposely sunk the plane heights to make these feel and look smaller. I think once they're built, I think you hear people. I think once they're built, I think you hear people have concerns, but number one, they're not even seeing this house. This is blinded by houses in front of it and plenty of trees in front of it. So they're not even going to see those. So these are not going to work at all on this, this size property.
And I just, I just want to read off the key numbers for you.
Sorry.
No, no, no. For seven Marston, the proposal is four thousand seven hundred and three square feet. Eight Marston, we, we had to estimate or scale it off at four thousand seven fifty-two. Nine is five thousand sixty-two. Eleven, five thousand one fourteen. Twelve was pretty good. Twelve is five two eight five. And then fifteen Marston is four eight two one. But when you compare those sizes to the size of the lots where the houses sit, for all four of my client's properties, it's thirteen percent of the size of the lot. For the other lots, it's slightly more. For eight Marston, it's twenty-three, and for twelve Marston, it's fifteen. So as far as this street, sorry, as the street is concerned, I think that he's done a good job of putting the right sized house on each lot. I think that thirteen, a lot, it's not. There is somebody else online who's been answering, Elizabeth Gilbert.
Okay, Ms. Gilbert? The floor is yours.
Thank you. I would just like to echo that the houses are simply too large. We're not talking about one street. The houses are in the historic district. You're not bound by a specific, I, I think the owner of the property is talking about the zoning code in terms of size enassing, which is something that's basically outside your purview. You are supposed to determine what is appropriate for the nature of this village, the historic district specifically. And I would appreciate it if you would give that some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. So my first comment is, as I look at this planting plan, your landscaping plan, pardon me, there's a lot of symmetry here. And, you know, looking at the Cape Myrtle, I know it's just a picture, but you've got it with the, with the mulch apron at the bottom. And that looks very suburban.
Yeah, that's not, well, that's just to give you.
Understand, it's a picture of a Cape Myrtle, but I'm just saying to you, the other thing is you have two at the end of the proposed pool. And as trees grow, there's not a really difference in their location to, end to end. And, and you have them, you know, you have a Cape Myrtle on one side of the house and another one on the other side of the house. And then you have, you know, so, but they, they look like they're kind of lined up like this. You see what I'm saying? And, and I think probably a new owner is going to come back and, and, and might want some shade in some other places. But I think if you could, if you could move them around to look, make it look somewhat random, like that was how the property actually looked. Do you understand what I'm saying?
But there's no house on it, so it's on the current property.
I'm looking at your, your landscaping plan.
Right.
So. And would you really be resistant to adding a couple more trees?
I'd create a couple more trees.
Okay. Anybody have an idea how many, a couple more trees you want?
I don't know, but I think the person who spoke from the tree group would probably be the best, yes, be the best person to ask.
Eileen, are you still on? I can call her.
Yes, I am still on. I don't think two trees will be sufficient for that, for thirty, thirty-eight thousand square feet. I would consult with a landscape, a, an arborist that has been very devoted to this process and be happy to get back to you. And I agree.
I just want to say, I'm sorry. Hi, this is, this is Liz. Board members, you cannot defer your authority to Eileen for, for this landscape plan. That's not proper. So, you know, she can give feedback and advice to the board and she can also give testimony to the board, which you can weigh. But you cannot defer your authority regarding the landscaping plan to have the applicant consult with Eileen, okay?
Well, that.
That's not, that's not proper. It's your job. It's your job. You listen to everybody and then you make a decision on the landscaping and the house.
Understood. I don't, I don't, I don't think we were deviating from that, but.
No, I think, I think Judith, the board member, yeah, she just said that, so I just want to make it clear. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I also agree that, you know, we're trying to avoid suburbanization of the, of the village. And having too much symmetry does portray that. So I would agree with your assessment on that.
Okay, do you want to make another comment, Michelle?
No, I mean, I, I, I don't.
Okay. So now, to complete my thoughts, the the house has come a long way. I agree with that. I said that to you earlier. And I thank you for that. And we don't, I'd like to see if we could negotiate rather than have a conflict here. So I'm going to ask you, because I, I'm going to ask you, do you think you had two of your houses, half of were under five thousand square feet? Do you think that there's any room here that, that you could maybe drop a couple hundred square feet off this house? Bring it down under five thousand?
Honestly, I really don't. I've worked extensively with the architects. But you were missing, I think it's a great house. I think it is relatively small for this property. You know, if I was in a different, oh, I, I could build another two thousand square feet here. You know, it's I think this is.
So with the zoning restrictions, you have really critical.
I think this is more than sufficient. And I, like I said, I think the scale of it by making the roof not high. If I bring this up to thirty-five feet, then you're going to see that it looks tremendous. And, you know, you're going to have all the trees around each one of these properties. From the street, you're not even going to see that house. The only one who's going to see that house is the guy who owns it.
How many bedrooms and how many baths?
That has five bedrooms on the top floor and it has five bathrooms on the top floor. And then there's one in the basement and one on the first floor. So seven total.
Oh, seven bedrooms.
Yeah, which is honestly with every new houses, even in a twenty-five-hundred square foot house, we'd usually put in six. We put four on the top, one on the first.
Can I make a comment now?
Sure.
So due to the code that you guys implemented on a minimum roof pitch, that also contributes to the height and the mass and the scale of the house, as Val stated at the last hearing. So, you know, we've done our best to keep it as low as possible and still meet the code. And like Val said, the last time, it is, it is this situation where, you know, in an attempt to, to reduce mass and scale, you almost kind of, you know, made it hard not to have certain mass and scale because of the minimum roof pitch.
Can I, can I say something to the board? This is Liz, guys. Under Village Code Section three hundred dash thirteen point six, criteria applicable to all applications for the ARB, subsection two E, it says inadequate or excessive mass and/or scale of the building or structure when compared or contrasted with other like structures in the village, even if the same is otherwise, in dimensional compliance under the applicable table of dimensional regulations. Mere compliance with the table of dimensional regulations shall not bear on or be determinative on whether mass or scale is excessive. And when you're looking at the mass or volume or scale of the house, I don't think you can count the number of internal bedrooms. You have to look at the way it looks and the mass and scale and the volume and everything from the outside architecture.
Right.
Thank you.
It's the reason why I asked about the number of bedrooms, because if we were talking about reducing the size of it, could we take two bedrooms off and make it a five bedroom house? That's the only reason why I mentioned that. But I thank you for the clarification.
When you look at that, I really don't think it looks scaled big. I really don't. When you picture it on a two-hundred-foot wide lot, sixty feet wide, it's not a big house.
So, so I'd like to see a site plan that shows each of the lots, all the lots combined. Yeah.
Yeah, we have that. But that was, because that would save, we didn't save any more, but we do.
Oh, no, this could be all.
Yeah, we have one. We do all lots.
I can be asked.
We do.
We'll have to get that to you every moment, but it has to be something old one, the old plans, maybe plan that not the new ones.
Yeah, so I, I think, I think that would be good for us. You know, I'm looking at things like your setbacks. You're at thirty-five feet, which I think is code, this is the code.
Twenty, well, on in the store, you could go to one.
Okay.
So I could bring it up fifteen, twenty feet.
I was going to ask you to take it back a couple feet.
Well, we took it back quite a bit and, and I think this one, what is this one? Since it's thirty-five or forty?
Thirty-five and a half feet.
Right, thirty-five and a half. But like I said, we could bring it up to one.
But you understand our challenge here, right, about the fact that people are concerned about the mass and.
But I don't think it's new to people. I think if you stay, go to the land.
I was there today.
See how big it is. It's, you're only talking sixty feet when it's two hundred feet wide. It's not, it's not.
Again, I would appreciate if you could bring that back, bring the revision back next time you return. So, so we can take, we can take a look at that. And with some of the modifications that we've discussed here today.
Yeah, more canopy trees and such.
Right.
And, and try to make it less symmetrical.
Yeah.
A little bit more flowing and random and.
Right.
Of course, I'd go for getting rid of the green giants, but that's up to you. There are too many green giants in town.
One day of this. Yeah, they're alternating.
Yeah, you at least moved them a bit.
Cedar trees.
Okay, but again, we're trying to get away from a structured appearance, structured look, right?
We understand. That's why we tried not to do the whole line of green giants.
Yeah.
And mix them up, but I understand the symmetry argument, but I think you still want the screening around the outside.
Right, this is, if you look, those aren't in the front of the house. Those are in the perimeter. So that's the backyard is screened.
Right.
And also in your rendering here, we have these mulch circles under the trees that are.
You know, you don't like.
Well, they're, they're suburban, I'm looking.
No mulch.
No mulch.
Okay, do you, should we move on to seven now?
That's good.
Sure.
So now.
Hi.
Oh.
Okay. This is seven?
No, no, that's the same one.
Okay, I thought so.
Beginning again, to be sure for the applicant, this is seven Marston. This is the parcel in front of nine, which we were just talking about. I think if we go to.
This will be on the street then.
Mm-hmm.
But.
Eight five eleven, so our first elevation. We know the changes that have been made. This is the house that my clients would like to live in. At the last meeting, we heard from the board that you would appreciate the removal of the, I guess, the dormers on the top. Which has been removed. You also talked about symmetry of the windows on the building and which especially with respect to the front door. We've removed the side light and we've tried to even evenly space everything out there to make it more aesthetically pleasing to the eye. We've also shortened and lengthened the shutters so that they fit more appropriately around the windows. And we could also see from this, from this angle that we've removed the column from the side entrance, because there was a comment about that. It sort of looked like it's a, a front entrance. So we tried to downplay a little bit and remove the columns that kept the overhangs, so you have a frame, you can just front, back, sideboard. Anything else I should come out? I think that's, that's all the changes on the front from the last meeting.
Right.
If the board's ready.
So just let me ask you something before we leave. It looks like the new overhang of the roof is, or the roof looks wider than the one with the dormers. Is that an optical illusion or is?
Yeah, just because the windows are gone.
Because, because that, that's giving us more mass now. We, we.
Which, which, which roof are you talking about?
The roof of, of the, the roof over the.
So the main roof over the front of the house was not changed in height or anything, just the dormers removed. Nothing, nothing was changed, but the dormers.
On your request.
No, I remember, but I'm just saying somehow optically it just looks.
If you look at the height, that door, the facade gable to the left.
Right.
You look at the peak of that and then go up to the ridge of the main roof, you can see that that has remained the same.
That's true.
So that, I mean, a way of sort of gauging how high is that roof line, it remains the same as before. It's just the dormers have disappeared.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, the thing that you got to remember is this is natural cedar. And within the first year, it's all going to turn gray and it's not going to appear. It's going to be much softer in person. It's not like a black asphalt roof. It's different.
The next elevation is on eighty-six eleven, and that's the right side elevation, the east side. Okay, on this elevation, I think really the only difference, the columns on the side of the side entry, just to make that look a little less formal. Otherwise, no real changes on this, on this aspect of the.
What's the facade material on the side?
Uh, this is all. Yep.
You want to see the renderings?
And we have the renderings.
Yeah, we'll get, let's go around first and then we'll take the renderings.
Uh, then the next one is eighty-seven eleven. That is the rear elevation and front elevation.
I don't see any changes on this.
So we just haven't pulled it up yet. I think we're still on eighty-five or eighty-six, but we're looking for eighty-seven. There we go.
Lot of windows.
Okay, so here, you'll see the change. The changes are with respect to windows on the second floor and.
Does this face towards division?
No.
This faces towards the neighbor next door.
The back.
The back.
In the back, but again, you're at such a distance with the trees in between, nobody sees it. However, what we did is I continued the deck across in the back because if you look here, you had one deck, two deck. Then I continued it because. You had one deck, two deck, then I continued it, because actually the house. That we're living in now in uh East Hampton. Had that and now that we're living there, we really enjoy that. And then also having this whole first part covered is real nice thing to have. So that's the only change. But again, nobody sees that but the people living there.
How big is that deck?
The deck is thirteen feet out.
And the whole length of the house?
Yes.
And the deck looks onto um nine Marsden.
Right.
Yes, okay.
But again, it's like two hundred feet from that house with two rows of trees. So nobody sees it.
They might hear it though.
What's that?
I said they might hear it though, that looks like a. Real good gathering place.
Thirteen by.
Honestly, we, we don't, what normally we do on there is like what I did today, I go out there, I make some phone calls, but. At the end of the day, that's when the sun is off of it and I read. That's basically what we do, it's not really a hangout. Uh underneath is more because people don't wanna be in the sun so much anymore. You know?
But I think the point, it's not so much how you plan to use the house.
Well, I'm living there.
I understand. Right? But I think all of us who own homes understand that after we're gone, someone else comes along. And has other living habits. And so what is, just saying, what is built for now is hopefully good for a while.
That's right.
And then lifestyles change. So if something is built that could theoretically accommodate. A large gathering, ultimately in the next hundred years, that's what's gonna happen. Whether you like to read when the sun goes down or not is not your main.
It's two hundred feet away from the next house.
Just an observation.
But the, the square footage of that space is eight hundred square feet.
Oh, well, the deck, yes. Um I don't know, I.
Thirteen by fifty?
Yeah, sixty, seventy.
So somewhere between six and seven hundred square feet.
Okay, so I overestimated, but still.
But it is a big deck, but.
Yeah, but just, just an observation. Yeah, I think there's a use question and then there's an architectural, uh as built.
Well, architecturally, I don't think it changes much and I. You don't want the back of the house, I think it looks fine. Um but function wise, not all that shade is great.
Okay. Jules, do you have any comments so far?
Um, the railing on the um, the, the deck that's now going all the way across.
Yes.
Uh somehow looks quite formidable and I think. It might just be from the way it's shown there, but it looks like this big black.
But you can see it on the.
Thing, so, yeah, let's, I guess I'll wait and see.
Okay. Michelle, any thoughts?
No, I think I just, I answered, asked the questions that I was concerned about it, I like the, I like the changes to the um. I like the removal of the col- the columns on the side entry and I like the way you addressed, I think it looks completely different. I like the front door, I like the, I like the, I think it makes it just, it's really appealing, I like, this is actually the house that I like. Um, I. Okay, you have first dibs. Um I am, as, as I said just a few minutes ago, a little. Concerned about that deck across the back, I think it, it's quite large. Um but other than that, um I really like this house a lot, I really like the design of it. Um but I, I hope you think about maybe reducing that back deck a little bit.
Well, the railing looks much better here.
Yeah.
Then, then, yeah, yeah, this, at least I guess because it's painted white. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so if you took this off. And this off.
Wow, this is um. On the last page though, it does quite.
Yeah, I like it the way it was originally, when you didn't have the middle covered, when you had the two sides. Where you have the, the um deck on the two sides and then.
Yeah, no, I know exactly what you mean. Which is the, the design of number nine as well.
Eliminating the shade in the middle of the house and eliminating the doors on the. Uh more slash then above.
It's very deep.
Yeah.
We're just, we're just looking at your shaded deck in the back. Looking at a profile.
That's great.
No, I get it.
I, I look at that, our house that's greater than this.
Right.
That has the same shade and it's, it's terrific.
Sure.
Where under there all the time, even under there.
But you also have, not too far from that deck is this am- amazing cabana that's also covered, right?
Yeah, but honestly, it depends if you're a some worshiper or not, I like being the shade. And we do utilize it on a daily basis. Today, we ate lunch there.
Okay.
We did.
Okay, I'm just gonna say ditto for the landscaping, okay?
Okay.
Yeah. Yes.
The um. It is a deep deck.
Yeah, it's often deep.
Looks like a, a little bit like a hotel.
Yeah.
This makes it look.
Commercial here.
Yeah. This view of it does look. Like a huge public, like a country club.
You know, we're talking about massing and, and, and so. This, we're on the la- I'm looking at the last page.
Yeah.
This is a wide house and it's only extended by a wide deck. And this is something that's gonna cause, I can see that this might cause some difference of opinion here.
You want me to remove the, and not have, not have doors for my lounge on the my deck? And.
What if, what if you um made the, just um. Shorten this, instead of coming all the way out here. Put this, you know, most of the house.
Shorten it in the middle, not on the ends, because you have um. On one side I have, that's where the table goes and the. So you need fourteen feet is, is sufficient.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other side is kinda like where a TV and you hang out, the middle was just. So that when, that's a room upstairs, a lounge that you walk out. But um I guess I wouldn't be opposed to bringing that in a bit.
Can you go back to the, the um?
Elevation, the drawing.
That had the previous.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
The rear.
For the rear, that had the, yes, there we go.
So how would you, you know?
Because what you could do here maybe is.
Yes, put a third one.
That you could take out.
And you can't walk out from the room above, so that.
Two bedrooms on each side, it's.
That's a bedroom and a bedroom, but in the middle, that's a walk.
Okay.
So it's a hangout area, which is nice to come out, but what I'm saying is, I wouldn't be opposed if we brought that part of the. Deck in, so let's just say I made that five or seven foot, so thirteen. So it would come out, out, in.
Uh-huh.
So it wouldn't be, I mean, it depends on, in reality, so you'd have to look at it on the side. Cause from this view, it would still look almost the same, but if you look at it aside, you'd see this is all the way back. So this way from that lounge, if you just walk outside.
Yeah.
Like I'm doing today, watching TV and then I decided I'd go out there and read. Otherwise, I'd have to go in and walk through a bedroom, so this way I don't have to walk through the bedroom.
Well, this is a place we might not need symmetry. We have the, the twin windows on the top floor. Maybe they don't have to have a deck in front of them, assuming it's a bathroom anyway, so no one's walking out of there. And, and you could, you could have a.
I'm pretty sure that's a bedroom.
This one is a bed, what she's saying is, if you follow my hand up, that's a bedroom as well.
And then the four windows is the lounge though, right?
This is the lounge.
Right, so but, but, but maybe you could do from one of your, your bedrooms. The one from the right, the deck could be extended to include. Your lounge area and stop there and have a gap.
And not connect all the way.
Not connect all the way.
Well, then that bedroom would not have entrance to it, well.
Well, it doesn't, well, you do have a door, you.
Right, but what if I just bring it in and so this comes out, this comes out and this is in, this would just be like a walkway. You know, like a five foot thing and this way they could go this way, you could go this way and you can still have doors. On the lounge area and you can still have.
I'm not trying to say.
Not gonna look so massive.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not trying to take away your doors on the lounge area, you understand that.
But even in the bedroom, it's nice to have access.
Matt, we can, Matt, we could relook at that area, just what we could come up with. That might accommodate what they're talking about.
Because in the previous one, they're just windows up top, but on the lower one, all across the back is all doors.
Mm-hmm, that was a big change.
That's the change.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I, I can change those windows to doors.
Doors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you have.
So that it lets in a lot more light.
No, I get it.
Gives you access to the room, so also, you like you said, yeah, I might not be there for a hundred years, I might be only for ninety.
Only ninety.
Right, but then I could sell Ophelia having access to that deck, but this is not a real estate.
I know, I, this is a design review. So I, I think the change to, to bring, whether you recess the center of it or not, the visual impact of that is a long continuous. Uh walkway and porch across the back, which really emphasizes how big it is. If you could break it by just as Chairman Williams had said, break that up by not having a projecting deck area. Beneath that pair of windows, it would, the visual would be much.
Do you see what we could work on that?
That's what's been.
Man, I think I have, I think I have it figured out.
Okay.
Yeah.
And thanks, so does anyone have any other observations?
Nope, that's it.
So I would just say, I, I will say this, this rendering, whatever, whatever page this is, right? We have your fourteen foot wide.
Thirteen, I think, again.
Okay, your thirteen foot wide deck here, and we have something that looks like it's closer to eight feet over here. Six?
Yeah.
Not bad.
On the front?
Yeah.
That's six. I believe it's also the angle that you seen, but I believe it's six.
Okay. Um does anyone remotely have a comment?
I do.
Oh, sorry, Karen's not here.
Monitoring.
Oh.
You see what I'm saying here? It's overhead.
Yeah, this is six and this is thirteen, so this is more than twice.
Right.
Yeah.
Hello?
Yes, we're, we're, oh, they're your best. Who, uh, someone has their hand up?
Yes, yes, please. Um, I would like to revisit. The mass with the discussion about the size of the house versus the proportion of the land, which I appreciate. However, I remember the challenge and the time it took. For twelve Marsden Street, which was a singular house, to get approved. And it's not lost on me that Mr. Tronzo at first proposed five houses. And then he came back with just one house. What is very troubling is not to reduce the size of these homes and to have five of them. Maybe a compromise, they're just, I, I don't think the village of Sag Harbor has ever dealt with a, a mass. Of this nature, but perhaps a compromise would be to bring the size and mass of the homes that are facing Marsden Street down. Because let's not forget that there's a five thousand two hundred eighty square foot home directly across the street. It, these are just, even individually, they're large. Multiplied by five, it's going to be shocking for the village, architecturally, historically. And aesthetically, I would hope that you would consider that. And just because the land is large, I have a large plot, plot of land, I have. Almost three quarters of an acre, my home is fifteen hundred eighty-six square feet, I appreciate, that's not of anybody's business. But just because you have a large plot, it doesn't have to maximize, this is not a real estate deal, this is a village. With a his- on the national historic, anyway, I would ask you to consider that, thank you.
Do we have anybody else who wants to comment?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, so I, I have one question on this house, I, first of all, I think it looks a lot better with, uh, without the dormers. Uh and does it, so this one still runs uh long ways across, across Marsden?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I think there was a comment, I, you know, I really, I really like the house, uh, I think there was a comment earlier about. Uh noise on, on the back deck, but I mean, we have noise regulation in the village, there was a. A renters' party on the house to the south of us a couple of Fourth of Julys ago. And it was, it was bad and it was all night and the cops came and, and broke it up, so. I mean, just because, y- y- you know, a deck could facilitate a party, doesn't mean that. You know, a party's legal in the village, am I, am I correct there?
Yes.
That's correct, we have a village noise ordinance, that's right.
And then, and then fi- finally. Um, I, I think the size of a lot, of the lot does make a difference, I mean, we're. Twenty-five hundred square feet, so we're on the corner, we're the White House on the corner of Division and Marsden, we have twenty-five hundred square feet. On, on a third of an acre. So, I mean, from a scale standpoint, I mean, I think the size of the lot does make a difference. And so this, this lot is, is how large?
Uh roughly three quarters of an acre.
So a little more.
A little more. Uh almost an acre, basically an acre.
Yeah, so three times the size of. Of our lot on, on a house that's maybe, you know, two times the size. Yeah, I, you know, I, that, they're large compared to the, the houses around, but I don't. You know, I don't necessarily see a problem with that, I, I ride down Glover, I walked down Glover, there's some large houses there. Um, right, right in the center of the village, so. Um, I think the changes are in accordance with the recommendations and, and I think they really look good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, are there any more comments? Because I, I think it's time for us to close this discussion. Please.
Sixty is the length, you want what width?
About forty. The other house on Marsden, the width is facing Mars. And last time we asked that this house be turned so that. The smaller uh face is facing Mars and the small facing this. So, so the forty foot would be facing us now to sixty foot, which is hard.
I, I have a comment too, I've been studying.
Please identify yourself.
Being an optimist, I live at notorious Marston Street House, that's already built. We have a half an acre, by the way, and a three thousand, three thousand feet of proper, three thousand feet house above the ground. And we elected to go down below when we did our renovation, because we thought that wasn't fair to the neighbors, without even being consulted. So we've never had a problem with you guys, but recently I reviewed all the houses near us. The one at the corner of, of Marsden and Division has maintained almost the same footprint, it did expand somewhat. But it looks very much like when the last tenant died, and it's quite a beautiful little white barn house. Up of the, up on the, up on the corner, when the corner house was renovated some time ago. He had to get a ha- a barn to serve as a garage from Vermont. To serve as a garage from Vermont. He reconstructed an old barn. So that it would look perfect with that antebellum house. Across the street is the colonial house where the Aragon family lives, where Martin Luther King once slept. It's a really cool house. It still has its baker's oven from the eighteen century. They have four, two over two windows in the front. And they have small, appropriate squares. They had an add-on garage, but they did it in incredibly thoughtful way. The Victorian farmhouse that's own. Uh, the people were here last time. It has two over two windows and it's never been altered in the shape and it's perfectly appropriate. We're getting these massive windows in the front and the back that have no place in the neighborhood. None. I don't even mind the size. It just doesn't look right. It looked like Palazzo. Victorian farmhouse Palazzos. Now that's a discrepancy. I really have a problem with the details. On this house, given the rest of the neighbors, including my own. Our front is a very appropriate. Door with side lights and four by fours, two by twos. Case of windows in the front yard. That's it. It's a very low key colonial. And I I just don't get it. I don't get why we're not going for more consistency. And I I'm really disappointed. And you guys, because you usually are really good about it and you've been good about it. Look at that house going up on Madison, God save us. The front is beautiful. They're doing such a good restoration job. And that's because you insisted. I'm really surprised. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody in the public one last time? Okay, so I I'm gonna make a motion that we close this discussion today. That you're gonna come back with some more information for us. And.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, and. Yeah, I just want to say, yeah. You understand what we, what we comments on. And we're trying to, where we're trying to go, okay? And I'd like you to consider um the mass or the parents of the mass on the house. Uh, can I get a second? To close this this uh.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so fifteen and.
Eleven are going to be adjourned.
Okay. So let's see what's.
We have, we have to adjourn.
Yeah, I I I move that we adjourn fifteen and eleven Marston Street.
All second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. But we're still in. Continued public hearing. For twenty-one Cornell Road.
Good chair.
I got a, I got a nice chair.
Thank you.
Oh, 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 that's very good.
Okay, I'll make sure.
Now, this was. Was on this last weekend. We had less meeting. You weren't. Please identify yourself.
Good evening. My name's Brian Lassner. I'm the architect representing. The project in uh twenty-one Cornell Road. And I have my clients here, who are the homeowners, Jennifer and Leslie Kay. Um, so just to get started. See a little history about the current property. Um, the current house, uh, property is located on the north side of Cornell Road. It's roughly three hundred and thirty-seven feet west of Harvard Road. The current lot size is thirteen thousand five hundred ninety-two square feet, which is around point three one three years. Um, let's see a little bit of the house that's currently there. Uh, which my clients live there and they have renovated it in the past and. See the landscaping from some of the pictures that it's something that they're actually passionate about. Um, but their family's growing, so that's why we're doing this on base. Um, so to get started here, the current home was built in nineteen ninety-one, which. Um, a big range style home with a flatboard siding and asphalt roof, which is done to have no historical value. We will be demolishing that house. Uh, there's a desire. We've proposed house.
You guys reviewed this last month and they had to uh redo this.
Yes. I'm I'm gonna run for shit. Um, alright, so the proposed home, the architectural style that we went with is a shingle style house. With uh gaming roof lines, um, full on full pitch. And some of the items that, you know, I heard in the last hearing, but something I. I've heard in other hearings with ARVs and villages is to break down the massing of the home. So if you look at the renderings, the the proposed renderings. In front, um, some of the things that we did to break down the massing were to create lower shed roofs. And also bringing the the ridge all the way down from the first floor to the second floor to create. Um. Give the. The massing pretty much gets broken in half, I guess. Also by the, you can see it's an interior that's on. It'll give it a little bit of the eclectic look. Um. Starting with the, if you wanna get started with the exterior materials from the ridge going down. Um, the roofing material that we'll be using is a tapered saw of red cedar, left natural. Um, the gutters and meters are gonna be a half round copper material. Siding was gonna be a perfection shingle, which is gonna be painted. We have a few colors in mind, but if you can see here, it's more of a lighter off-white tone. Um, currently we're calling out for like an Oxford white, eventually more. Um, clapboard siding. Um, that would also be painted white. And the trim would be a pewter, which is another tone of of white, which it's a little hard to see in these images, but. Um, just here, that's stuff. So basically. These areas here would be. On the walls on the first and second floor would be. Um, perfection shingle painted, and then in the gables, we went with a clapboard look. Um, some of the other materials that we're using on the chimney. We're going with a Connecticut blend mosaic pattern. With copper flashings. Um.
Bless you.
Bless you.
The windows um are a Marvin Ultimate, which is an alumna- um aluminum clad. And the color is gonna match the trim. Um, and that is a double hung product. Some of the smaller windows, the scale of it, um, we went with a a casemate or a picture, but. You can see you have a similar, like this is an eight over eight pattern. The proportions are similar from the first, you know, hallway from the ridge all the way down. The first floor. The trim is a PVC product. And this is a one by eight with the extra drip, just to give it a little bit. Brings down the massing of the actual uh faces and free boards. That's gonna be a pewter paint color as well, which is similar to the trim on the windows. So for the shutters, we're going with a solid wood shutter. That has a, it's gonna be a solid panel, not blue, just single panels. And the paint color currently shown is like a, we're trying to be like a blue green. That's something that. My clients have recommended that. These are, they gave me inspiration pictures. At some point, we're gonna try to go with this bluer screen tone. And we'll probably have it painted in the field to put it up next to the material to get it in the sun and storm. I'm my best attempt at getting that color close to the space. Um, columns are square column, which are ten by ten. And uh we chamfered the corners to make it not as bulky looking. Patios and walkways are gonna be a blue stone with a stone riser. On all the uh on the patio. If you go to the side elevation, you'll see the covered patio. Yep, so here we're gonna have a little bit of stone. Around the front and then stepping stone, blue stone along this patio and this. Patio here that connects to the pool. Um, and this is a good image to kind of jump into the. Handrail system is gonna end up being a cedar nail post. With a stainless steel uh cable system, and we're also doing a cedar. Um, top, top rail. I also provided a a cut sheet for the sconces, which is gonna be. Um, so a copper product. And this, they have an option with this company to, normally they do uh actual gas. We're gonna go with a um dark sky compliant. They give you an option to do an electric. Um. Said it somewhere in here, that's dark sky compliant. But, oh, right here, this, what they do is this solid copper cap, they make, instead of a glass, they make coppers and the light comes down. And it gives it a dark sky compliance look with the.
Hmm.
Into the sky. Pretty much. Pretty much.
Wood. Anybody like to comment?
Huh?
Let's let, we'll start with, we'll start with the, the.
No, no, I already just pulled him.
Rover, are you, have a comment?
Chairman wants to start with the board.
Yeah.
Oh.
If I don't respond.
Okay, please mute mute yourself if you're having a conversation. You mute. Okay. Megan, we haven't seen you a few minutes. Would you like to give a comment?
Sure. Um. What would I write? Um. So you are proposing three thousand four hundred thirty, three thousand forty-eight square feet, or three thousand eighty-seven is allowed. Um. And it looks like your front yard. Which was. You know, beautiful front yard with three or four mature cedars. You're gonna be doing away with those.
I wanna put the landscape.
We have a land that feeds the land.
Do you have a report of that?
We have a landscape, we have a landscape plan.
And you have a report of the diseased trees?
Existent trees?
Yeah.
Horrible condition. We just didn't have the money to make them out. We bought the house. We're gonna say.
Did you put the swing up? Yeah, does it hold?
We've never seen.
Well, it looks very nice.
It's a charming house. The front yard.
When we bought it, there was a squatter in residence. We're leaving it out. We renovated it. We brought our family. The house is falling apart. We spent too much money making it pretty. We get compliments every day for the community. And it's, we looked into adding onto the house and it just is falling apart. So this is now our dream house. We literally here twelve months after the year. And with the other family, so.
Yeah.
We love the Glover Street look of homes, so we took inspiration from that.
So. It does, I I walked down that block this morning um to familiarize myself with the area and the surrounding properties. And in Redwood, you know, people are starting to really max out their GFA. Um. However. I don't necessarily think that's the right thing. Um, and. There seems to be, it, it feels like the. The house that's there now and the way it looks. It feels like. A little house that. Is surrounded by trees and that's kind of the feel you get on the, on the street is these homes that are not. That the homes are a little overwhelmed by their landscaping in a good way. And I think with this new design, you, the home is overwhelming the lot. Especially with this semi-circle um driveway, you're, I I understand the convenience of that, but it's. It totally takes away from the natural landscape. And um, that is. One of the reasons why people come here is because of the unmanicured natural landscape.
So two comments for that is there's a property across the street on Dartmouth. Um. Which a developer purchased, it was approved. Um, it's coming to the public market for sale. It is a point two acre piece and it is. The exact same size as ours. We have point two acres larger.
Yeah.
So that's, and when you look around, there is an awful black, excuse my language, modern house right next to it, maxed out. Which again, developer home. We're not developers.
Yeah, that one didn't, doesn't feel like it's overwhelming though, for some reason. It just feels like it's within. Yeah, so on this board, um, you know, it changed, the members change. Um, it's, everything is case by case and just because one house was approved doesn't mean that. That means a a exact, a a similar. Proposal is going to be approved.
I understood. Again, I'm just sharing my perspective of, you know, we walk all the homes. We s- and we see all the big new houses. We're looking for a house that modestly fits our families. Like, we wanna raise our family in Sag Harbor Village. We are twelve months out of the year.
Is there one bedroom, two bedrooms on your current house?
Yeah, we, we lived in a one bed, one bath right now house.
So that's what you're looking at currently?
You're looking at a twelve hundred.
Yeah, that's great. So um, I live in the village in the historic district and my house is under twenty-four hundred square feet. We have five bedrooms, three bathrooms and an unfinished basement.
That's double, yeah, that's double with the ground, yeah.
Right, but what I'm saying is you can achieve that without go, maxing, basically maxing out at three thousand forty-eight. Five.
So this house is only four above ground. So it's less than you currently have.
Well.
I'm just saying your scale is a little off to what's really happening. Like you said, five bedrooms.
I'm just telling you the reality.
You know, I am too. That's what I'm saying. Your house actually has four square footage, or it's bigger than this.
It's not.
You measured it or is it from? Yeah, I would just, I mean, I find that hard to believe. I designed houses all like.
Yeah, I live it. I live in that.
Let's just say this, let's, let's not get into this. I just wanna say. Standards have changed. Houses used to have eight and a half foot ceilings. Now everybody needs eleven feet.
This is.
I don't know why they're playing basketball inside. But, but I'm just saying, you, you, this is no comparison. In terms of standards and 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 and. Um. People. People are looking at cubic feet, not square feet, in truth. Right? Because they, they want a house with great volume. And and so I don't wanna get into the discussion, but please, don't debate.
Oh, yeah. What what it also says is the volume part of it.
Yeah.
With square footage, we do not have any double height spaces. So when you talk about.
So what is, what's the ridge line height? What's the roof ridge line height?
No, I just want, because I know some houses, they do four years with two double height spaces, so that square footage could be. You know, another four hundred square feet of volume.
I understand.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have that in Charlie. I was scared why.
But that's what developers think is marketable.
But in the back of this house, that third floor, the set of windows that are up at the top are not. It, it's in the staircase.
Yeah, right.
You guys talked about that.
We did talk about, I remember talking about that.
Yeah, so that's in the scare staircase. It's kind of recessed between the two gables. Going back to your, they're allowed thirty-five feet and we're probably a thirty-two feet tall, so we're three feet lower than what's actually allowed.
This is, this is a popular trend today.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I know it is a lot of, like, a standard is thirty-two feet, but. You can see here, if I, if you look at uh sheet zero zero five, you'll see the ridge height is much lower. And the only reason I know it's open three feet lower is because my chimney is pretty much at, versus plate blue that you would increase to. Higher than the ridge.
I I'd like to say that I really like the design of this house. Um, and um, I I don't. Think it's overwhelming for the lot. Um. I think that it's been tastefully designed and I I think that it does fit in. One of those, that's my thought.
Just your thoughts.
Um, the things that jump out at me immediately are the circular driveway, which. Um. Really is not. Really is not. A Sag Harbor look. And um. The chimneys are. Seem to be made of giant stones and. Again, uh, we're not a stony area. And so, he, uh, they look like they belong in Pennsylvania or something. Um. And, but I, I like the, the basic. Design of the house, I think it's nice looking. But I, and uh, would. Prefer less suburban landscaping. No circular driveway, some other kind of chimney material. And if there's any way to. Um. Some, do this thing and make it less large. I'm not sure what that would be, but anyway, uh.
Is the square footage of the house?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, the square footage, three thousand something, yeah.
Forty.
Yeah.
Can I just make one comment, I'm sorry, we sat here last month and saw, I think, without putting you down, we saw a seven bedroom house get approved. Um. Much larger in scale, much larger in size, we all, and it got approved, you know, instantaneously. From an aesthetic. This is, in my opinion, much more Sag Harbor from a look, from a feel than the glass modern farmhouse that Brian. Up, you know, designed in this board approved last month, so I just, again, I was a spectator, I saw it, it was significantly larger. Again, we wanna have two kids, there's three bedrooms upstairs, we want our elderly parents to visit from Florida, one bedroom on the main level. And then a basement bedroom, who knows, kids, whatever.
Yeah.
That's what we're creating, we didn't max out height, we tried to do everything right from a look, from an aesthetic.
Mm-hmm.
This is not a developer's home, this is going to be our personal house, this is what we wanna raise kids.
And it does have a, a nice personal feel to it.
And the reason for the circular driveway is, and you, ma'am, you, you are in, you're walking Redwoods, there's a cop now. Cars fly. Seriously, we have a cop in Redwoods every single day, cause everyone is driving, the circular driveway, so my wife. Can pull in and not have to back out, the problem with a lot of these homes from my perspective is, you're like this, you're backing out trying to get out of the property. And we live on a super quiet street, we'd be shot, cars zip by, the landscapers, they're the pool guys, they're just getting the heck out of there. So the reason, thoughtfully, is that drive allows to pull in and pull out, seriously, it was.
Yeah, I understand the um, the ease of it and the convenience and so on.
So that, I just wanted to at least.
Your driveway extends to the back of the house based on the rendering?
Yeah.
And that's the way it currently is. I believe you have room to turn around the way it currently is.
I have three parents, my parents are elderly, they're, they'll live with us, so we have two cars back there. It's just, it's almost impossible, I mean, we live there now, it's so tight and I see it on all these homes in the neighborhood. So, yeah, I'm just kidding, cause, cause everything has done properly, like this is a big deal to us.
I hear you. And I'll just say, not everyone on this board approved the house you're talking about. I wasn't here.
I, I, I think.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, it's, it just goes to show that. Every case is different. And I'm grateful to have a voice. In this application today.
Which is great, but again, we live in this community, not. Trying to see things, but we're just asking.
You know, unfortunately, that's, that's really none of our business. Because. Sometimes developers say the same thing. Okay. Um, let me just say this. Uh, in, in terms of what Judith's point is. On the chimney, I kind of agree, it really makes some kind of stand out and very prominent. But this is, this is, this is a finishing they've used on their ranch and it comes out, it's very pretty the way they've used it. But it's much less, it's just part of a, it's almost like a, uh. How much the word I'm looking for? Um. It, it's not this much. And, and. I think maybe you, cause you have now two chimneys here from what we're saying, right? Would you consider maybe changing the material here?
We did have a conversation about it being brick at one point.
Yeah, we were being, we were being brick and still, and. Like the stone.
It, it would certainly be much more of a Sag Harbor look to have brick, because most of the chimneys.
Sure.
Because there's something kind of. These are historical forms, you know, that's the profile of a eighteenth century salt box on the left. I think Brian has done a very interesting job of pulling these. Sort of masses together. So the stone chimney sort of jumps out as a. But, I think what would be consistent with this would be the use of, of brick. Stringers and. And black headers alternating, because it gives you more color, but it's brick. And, and it's, and it's traditional to like a thirties or forties. Overscale cottage, which is the way I kind of read the aesthetic of this, so you're talking about the, the blackened headers, little square guys. Alternating with the length of a fired brick.
Oh, so a long red brick and a short black.
And then a square black, and then alternating in Flemish bond, alternating in that pattern, and it. We, you know, you could look this up, it's kind, I'm just saying it's kind, it's brick. But it has a little, it has more. Life to it and, and not, I mean, it's hard to pick out a brick, you know, what the brick color is. You know, it doesn't quite have the uh, interest of a stone, which is more varied, but I'm just thinking you could, you could play around with different kinds of brick patterns. And different brick types that would. Get into, get away from the stone, get into brick, which is more traditional here, which is. Judy's point.
Are you landscaping that space where the circular driveway is?
Yeah, the landscape plan, right now those trees were taken out, so you can see the architecture.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that makes a difference.
If you go to the, yeah, if you wanna talk about the landscape.
That makes a difference, cause you don't, it looks like it's just open with the circular driveway.
Yeah, if, yeah, if you put the trees in there, you wouldn't see.
Got it.
So here's the other two.
Oh, okay.
So we're proposing to put uh, village trees, canopy trees in along the front. And also they currently have around the perimeter here on the, this like darker shaded area, is the current existing. Um, evergreen trees. Um, also putting a canopy tree here in the corner of the house. Um, just to talk about the driveway is gonna be pea gravel driveway with cobblestone curving, which you can see in the rendering. Um, in the back where the parking area is, we're gonna end up having a, they wanna do like a butterfly garden with um. Some lower dwarf plantings. That would attract butterflies and then in the back you can see here, this is a dining area, which. We're adding another additional six canopy trees, which is for coverage. Yeah. Um, hydrangeas, nebula kind of wrapping around the, you know, on the, on the lower level around the foundation and around the existing uh. Plantings.
Thank you, that, that really makes it.
Yeah. I always go back and forth between, you know, there's, there's quite a bit of landscaping going on here. If I put that in the rendering, you wouldn't see the house, and you say, let's see architecture look like, so.
Thank you for explaining.
Yeah.
That is certainly.
But it, again, that looks a little, those four in the front look a little symmetrical.
Yeah.
Those are village trees, aren't they?
Uh, those are village?
They're gonna be, it's gonna be, we're planting those, you said, uh. We're removing the existing, the trees that were right here, there were diseased trees in the front, we're taking those down and replacing, putting new trees along the front.
So that's in the right of way, that's in the right of way, so.
And the trees you're taking down, what's the story on them, you said they were rotten or something, or what?
We, we wanted to take them down when we went into the house, but um, and he said they were diseased and they should come down, but. The amount of money it costs, he wants to make the house look pretty itself and feel comfortable, we didn't talk about.
Yeah, they like, take the root, it became a, it was a huge expense, so we said, when we, you know, do something.
We either rock and hide, it's funny, I think it's so pretty, but wrapping, when they're rocking hide, they're being strangled and killed.
Hmm.
Ever, which was. So.
Um, but they need the permit though to take those down?
Yeah, I think so.
If they are village trees that they're going to.
Okay.
They're, they're on, there, there was an.
Oh.
They're not, yeah.
They're not village trees, okay.
No, no, they are village trees, so whatever, they're going down.
Um.
Okay, this is, we're still in a public hearing. Does anyone here, president, wanna make a comment other than the owners and the architect? And is there anybody in line with their hands up?
Nope.
Okay. Um. Yeah, I wanna close the public hearing, uh, thank you for that. Um. Can I get, I propose that we close the public hearing, can I get a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Okay. Um. So what's your thought about some of the comments that you've heard in terms of the chimney and stuff?
Um, it was a debate that we had internally. I think it fits just from the homes that I see in the village, I think it fits, I think it's maybe softer than the rendering books. I personally really love it. Um, it was a design choice that we spent. Hours of debate on and it's something that.
We had ren- we had renderings of it the other way and stuff, and that, we all agreed that shouldn't be on, that that's why we don't.
I think driving down Glover Street and seeing these homes, like it certainly fits the exact aesthetic of what I see.
So. I don't doubt it, you know? Um. But, but we're getting kind of uniformed, people like something, they copy it and we're losing the. The variety. In, in the village, you know, and, and so, I'd hear you, but we're, we're getting to be. This board is kind of anti the, the, the. Repetitive spirit, right?
And the reason we did this was in our micro area, we have a black modern box, we have the new house on twenty-eight Dartmouth, which is. Black flat roof modern, across the street from us is yellow cedar, um, so. We loved that this actually differs from our little neighborhood. Every house we have super modern and then we're bringing this back to real Sag Harbor traditional. And so. Within our neighborhood, this actually differs, um, and if you drove down, you would see exactly what I'm talking about. So it is different.
No, I did drive down and, and uh. As I said, your house was very charming, beautiful, it was just like, you know. And now you're saying it's, it's failing you. Um. But this curb appeals, off the charts.
That's her.
Off the charts.
That's why we live, we put tons of.
But I must look too much for that.
We've put, and when we took over the house, there was a squatter, she was smoking cigarettes inside, I mean, like, it was crazy. And it was our first house, we got married last year, it was like, let's do it, and everything is falling apart.
Before we knew it, the walls are breaking apart and leaking and the roof is coming apart and.
And our.
Also the bedroom, like when we were walking through the house, the bedroom location and stuff, we have two kids in that house, if not.
And our family's growing, we won't say any more than that, so we're, we wait, so we're hoping to. Do it.
Okay, um, we've closed the public hearing. Um. Does anyone wanna make a motion regarding this?
I will make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Wait a minute.
Or can I, I know, because you've made comments about going back to change their chimney.
Well, he's, they, they're refusing to do it.
Okay, so.
So wait a minute, there, no, no change to anything.
What else have we requested that they change? You talked about the chimney.
Right.
And the driveway.
And the driveway.
And? What was decided, nothing? No changes, period.
They're saying they don't wanna change the chimney, I, I think they said they didn't wanna change the driveway.
They don't wanna change the driveway.
So they showed you that the landscaping plan with trees.
The, yeah, the, the driveway, um. With the landscaping won't, won't show that much, um. I, I do object to those chimneys, but uh.
Yeah, and I would object to the semi-circle driveway, I'm, I'm sorry, it's just.
Well, I object to it, but I'm willing to say, okay, if you cover it up so I can't see it, um. But I, I, um, I, I can't.
Can't just cover everything up with landscaping, like.
I know.
We're just saying cover up the driveway entrance, right, not the house.
Yeah, I understand.
So that's, no, I'm saying, so she would be.
Well, the dri- this circular driveway, which. I, as, as Megan brought up, you could. Turn your car around back here and come back out.
What's this, what's the, I'm sorry, what's the downs, I mean. Why couldn't they have a circular driveway, is it just an aesthetic look that, that you don't like?
They're already doing away with much of the yard.
So it's, is it the loss of the yard because of the driveway that you're saying?
The fact that the way that the house is nearly maxing out the allowable GFA. Ma- makes, and the fact that it has what looks like three stories because of the top windows. Um, it ha- it makes the house dominate the property. Instead of seemingly like breathing into the property surrounded by trees, which is. Why people come to Sag Harbor, and if we have this carved out yard, then it does away with that natural landscape even more.
But they have natural landscaping around the. I mean, I'm just trying to understand your point, they have some.
From what we can see on the street.
Right, but they have some landscaping to the right side of the property.
It's all all.
Yeah, are those tall trees right there?
Well, I think, yeah.
Yeah, these are, these are tall, these are canopy trees and then we actually have lower plantings in front of it, and this is all lower planting as well.
Yeah.
Exactly. It's just, and, and again, if you look at where the car is in the northwest corner, like that's the challenge, that visual shows you. If my parents are living with me and my car's there, you gotta back all the way out, that's the point.
So if there's three cars out there.
I get it, I back out into Jermaine every single day in a Sprinter van, like I, like, yeah, it is, but you make do.
That's, that's scary.
And you know, you use your neighbors to help you and that like. Um, I think you just, you need to make some compromises here, I understand this is your dream home and we can, you know. Allow for you to make this more of your dream home, but either the massing has to come down or you need to allow for more. Natural landscape without being so manicured. This is my stance.
Yeah, so one is safety and one is pure.
We're about aesthetics, it doesn't matter if it's safety, it really, really doesn't.
So the two, the two challenges are the, the driveway, which. Again, the response is safety and then the um. Um, chimney, which is a personal aesthetic kind of look, we would compromise on the chimney to keep this, because again, there, this is. This isn't cute, this isn't fun, we have a cop who literally sits a hundred feet from us because all the landscapers are blowing by, we've had. Tons of people call.
So that's like, you need to get a speed bump in your property, that's a totally different thing.
So we would compromise, so we would, we would compromise on the chimney, and so that's.
You, in what way?
I know, I did a brick, brick chimney, that's just stone.
Oh.
Michelle, any other comments?
Nope.
Yeah, okay, um. I would like you to consider other options for the driveway, but, but I don't want you to risk your lives either. Um, yeah, I was there today, he's probably saying that, cause that's an easy stop sign to blow, but um. Blow pass, a roll through, whatever, anyway. Um, I'll accept a motion to approve this.
I, I had made the motion.
You made the motion, do we have a second?
Is it, is it about brick and stone or is it not? Is it is it about brick and stone or is it not?
Well, you have told us that you're gonna make this approve, alright?
So then it would be.
It's subject to.
Subject to the, I'm sorry, yes, subject to the change in the.
Brick chimney from stone.
Brick chimney.
Yes.
Okay.
You have to you have to write that if you do if you if the board does vote to approve, you have to write that on the certificate of appropriateness tonight. You have to have as a condition of approval.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I've I've marked up drawings with other boards, signature and the construction documents with Steve and the renderings and all that will be updated in a short break.
Okay.
Someone to second.
And was something uh decided about the um landscaping being uh more fluid? That I love the uh butterfly garden in the back. And that seems lovely. And then you're gonna do something with.
So so you were here last week. You were here this week. You know that we talked about symmetry and suburbanization and that sort of thing. So what we're saying here, I think, is these four trees are going to be prominent. They're lined up like soldiers. And hopefully they're not. I don't even know if they're all the same uh tree or not. But hopefully there's some var- variation there.
Yeah, we'll make we'll make sure that there's no symmetry. Jennifer's mother has worked at Brown Works, so Dave worked twenty years. The owner of Brown Works is her sister's godmother. Like, this is gonna be an amazing landscape there. And we don't love symmetry in general, right? That's why it doesn't have a symmetrical elevation. So we will unequivocally make it not symmetrical.
It's definitely gonna be more of a natural look.
Great.
So if if you guys are wanting them to change the landscape plan and change the um.
Do you think we should?
To the jury.
That's a that's a lot of cha- change to mark up.
Okay.
Um.
Was there a request to change the landscaping or just the the suggestion to not be symmetrical? Cause that's kind of.
I I think that was that would do just to say not symmetrical.
So the only change is the for chimney, yeah, so that's.
Um, okay, I I.
There's a motion on the table.
There's a motion on the table. Do we have a second for the motion?
Well, you can second that.
I am going to second.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Julie. I'll second that motion. All in favor? Thank you. I.
Okay.
All opposed?
Megan, no.
Okay. Thank you. So we will.
But we have to mark it up.
We'll mark it up.
Make sure it says all that.
Every time we do this sort of thing.
I just I don't want to be on record as having a second. Because I have some reservations.
Okay. And let's see, I lost my place.
So you're gonna mark this up right now?
Right.
So spare Judith, you wanna mark it up?
So it's probably.
Here, you're gonna say with with a brick chimney. It's on.
Yeah, well, yes.
And asymmetrical.
Shade trees and landscaping.
That salt box profile like, you know, it's funny that you were here. I didn't think you were gonna quite please it. I love it. No, I had this before we even talked, but there's a portion that I love. Yeah, wasn't asking me to eat here. I'm just sincere. Come on, I'm sincere. Cause I was like.
In the meantime, who's ever going to uh represent um twelve Lincoln Street and come up and set up, please?
Over.
Yeah, I thought this was gonna be a short meeting. This 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 football.
We're used to that. Not at all. We're used to sharing. Not at all. You could spread that.
There is, let's see the tab. Oh.
Some view for the. System, right? Oh, no.
In Jersey again.
Robert.
Oh, good. They have uh proposed versus stones.
It's a square.
Oh, and then I'm waiting to know.
This is for.
The last one.
I wish you have everything. Okay, we signed it. We annotated it and signed it.
Lights?
Yeah.
That was like a blue form.
Yeah, I presented. Welcome. Please identify yourself.
David Port, Christopher Law, following Rose Paul, Lincoln Street. Uh, fortunately, our at the last minutes scheduling issue, we couldn't be here. So uh hoping I can walk you through the changes since the uh since the last discussion. This is our third time. First time was a uh non-public discussion. This is now our second uh public hearing. And this place, I'd like to just take you through uh through the changes to the front elevation that were recommended by the board for the last year.
Here, this is non Lincoln. I think here.
Thank you. So in our prior uh in our prior designs, which uh when we get to the following page, you should see the
So that's different from this?
Top right windows here. Only were changed to follow the same sill height as the windows on the left. There was a discussion last time about matching those heights and getting rid of those doubles. It originally started with some larger windows there. That's a an open staircase front there. Uh, that does pass through to the uh from first level to second level. So our second attempt that it was um, I'm sorry, Carrie, if you go to if you go to page.
That's different from this.
It's not.
It is though. Oh, oh, I can't read that. Thank. Oh, let's see. Page is different from this.
So page six shows our first our first here, second, which we presented last hearing. And our updated here, big part of the discussion last time was aligning the sills of all of all the second floor front elevation windows. It works. It fills in. It matches. It's ideally a little less glass than we would have liked, but we're happy with how it how it works. Um, second to that, uh, there was a discussion about the upper lights. Originally, as you see, it had it had a full glass tower there. We moved to add some some small lights up top. It was it was suggested that we increase the size of those and that was also done on this on this uh latest update. Uh, in addition to those changes on the front, uh, on the rear elevation which is page.
So so just to be clear, those large windows along the stair tower, as you had them have been alternated for for the windows I'm seeing on the.
This 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 year is the most current.
Right, okay.
Uh, the rear elevation on page uh five, please. Minor change to the rear elevation, for giving example, which board members suggested it, but these these two lights here were originally separate to provide for a TV wall or something along those lines on the inside. We brought them together to keep it consistent with the triple that was down in the back of the primary venue.
And we clarified last time that that is a raised seam metal roof.
That's correct.
Okay.
And if anything, so if it did, then I can pull up the uh the front uh rendering that's updated as well to show those new windows. Carrie, that should be right after page seven. So you have standing seam over the front porch, standing seam on this brow over this dining room bay and then standing seam on the rear of the house over the covered patio. Uh, as as actually one to bring up to the board is as we were made aware last year and like we may do aware, we are currently working with the Harvard committee. So we're we're as far as the landscapes offered and a few things in the back, that's that's currently in process.
So you guys is you're just getting a feeling of this because we can't approve without Harvard committee first.
Yeah, we felt since we already started, we're towards uh we're towards the finish line regardless.
Okay.
They've submitted through to Harvard.
As far as changes, that's that's what we've got from from last till last to today.
I I feel like there's a bit of a missed opportunity here to do something that's oh. I mean, now that we've changed, you know, you've changed the windows. I feel like it's I feel like there's something missing still and I I can't quite put my finger on it.
I I might know, um, because I've been thinking that now that you've toned down and traditionalized the facade, maybe you want to make the the entry a little more grand. Instead of it just being flanked by windows, maybe you want to give it like a real like portal with like nice side lights. Bring it bring it back to like Sag Harbor.
I I would be opposed to that. So so if I could ask to go to the uh front elevation on the sheet.
Yeah, the numbers on these sheets are hard to see.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'll put it up right there. So Megan, you're referring to the two windows next to the double door.
Yeah.
More to a a single a single door with side lights.
I mean, a single door or I mean, you could have two like the French doors, but since that you have so much glass in the doors, you don't really need these windows. It it kind of seems too perfluous and less like I think that's a missed opportunity. Like there could be something nice in a design there.
Yeah, I absolutely would be opposed to Megan's suggestion.
Give it a little character.
Yeah, that's a good point, Megan.
But with the with the roof coming out so far, you're not gonna really it's such it's in such shadow that it's gonna be hard to see that. There's something over over scaled about that heat somehow.
This is this is a southern facing.
South.
South facing, yeah.
The front.
Yeah. So you get some s- lower sunlight in there a couple months a year.
No, 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 it's not. I'm sorry. Because of the curvature of the road there, it's not. This is this faces more north. It's Lincoln. Lincoln comes up and then vents back. So this is before the term. Oh, I apologize. It's 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 more north.
Mm hmm. This is where the.
Right. Oh, it's so it's just the opposite. It's northern view. Yeah, okay.
Right. Right, like that.
Yeah, the group, so the the elevation of the property, it drops about eight feet back from from uh pavement height to that.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be some would be some visibility of that that front entrance.
Um, did you have any thought of solar panels?
I do not.
Okay.
Not. I um I wouldn't be a hundred percent opposed to it on the on the rear, which would pick up some south, but we do have the state woods behind there and a lot of big trees. So I don't know. I don't know what the exposure would be. I'd say depending on what that front land buffer that we're um and where we where that shakes out. If there's if there's actual sun exposure to that south roof, I would I would be open to uh going the options.
Hmm. Well. Think about it.
Yep.
Um, have you considered uh the configuration of the garage facing the street? And how we don't normally like that?
Yes.
So I have not played around with any other configuration of it. Um. Without offsetting the without offsetting the house to access to, it would be maybe difficult. Um. I will say that again, depending on that uh wetland buffer, it may force us to do something a little bit different.
Okay.
Garage, the proximity of the garage and pool is the really the only thing you have in question as far as that. Uh, the house is is a rear of any issue.
Cool.
So I would tell you that when we're when we're planning with that buffer, I'll see if it can work.
Okay. I think what we would prefer would for those garage doors to be turned, maybe face the house so that we don't have to look at them. For people from the street, I mean.
And I if if I am able to move that without an effective buffer, I I will play around on second.
Okay.
I'm open to seeing if it can work and I'll be able to do that.
Cool.
Zach, I know this is not used, but do you have any observations?
Yeah. Uh, briefly, I I like what your comment that have missed opportunity. I I just feel that well, I'll say it's too plain. There's there's just something not guess the word exciting is inappropriate. But if the two projecting units were different, if the massing one was different from the other, if the height, there's 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 just kind of a lack of uh style. And you know, we see a lot of vernacular houses from the eighteen seventies, eighties, nineties, turn of the century, which are rather small, lacking in style. But this is a fairly sizable house. It's like two of them with a connecting unit between. But I just I feel that it could use a little more style, I guess. I'm not quite sure how to phrase that, but um I'm I'm sure it accomplishes your your goals in terms of, you know, your interior spaces and the land and, you know, we we want to live, that that's things of that nature. But there's just something uh looks in the scale of it. It's it's rather plain. And like, you know, I don't think you need to overdo that, but I think there's just something could make it more interesting, energetic. I'm not, but I don't design things, so I don't want to question the architectural profession. That's that's a whole other thing. But the overall effect of this is one of plainness. It's just like, take the way.
And maybe that was some bad advice from us. I don't know. I I'm I'm just, I agree that it looks kind of institutional. And um I do appreciate what you did with the stairwell glass.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and um so maybe that gives you a little more leeway to come back with something, you know?
Well, fortunately and unfortunately, we can't we can't close the book on regardless. We're in a public place.
Right.
I can definitely uh I can suggest an a hundred percent open to some door adjustments there as far as maybe some detail and adding a little counter sharing layer on.
Yeah.
I think we'll use the next bit into our to our advantage.
Sounds good.
Great.
And 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 you know, you you a bit our feeling about landscaping, right? And it might be better to show us a rendering within without the trees.
So to be honest with the landscaping, I did not do any adjustments on landscaping considering.
Understood.
Yeah.
Understood. I'm just saying for our next meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I know we had discussed a few changes, but it just it felt it wasn't worth taking the time to. I know we had discussed a few changes, but it just, it felt it wasn't worth taking the time to re-render and to, to go that route.
Right. Yeah, and we don't want you to burn money unnecessarily.
Yeah. But, but it's. See how that's, how that's going. We'll definitely present again, even if we are not at one silver, we can improve. But we're definitely bringing the changes and giving us data.
Yeah. Okay.
That'd be great. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to table twelve Lincoln Street. All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we're closing. Uh, was it?
So one thirty-two Jermaine Avenue, they're not here. Bye, thank you. And twenty-nine Eastville is not here also. But I will say that they, well, well, one thirty-two submitted plans to me yesterday, and I didn't tell them that we have a seven day. Uh, and then he said that he was going to still come today and present. He's not here. So, and then twenty-nine Eastville, they did not get us plans, uh, in time, and he's requesting a jury.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So I'll take a motion to adjourn both one thirty-two Jermaine.
I'll second that.
And twenty-nine Eastville Avenue. All in favor?
Aye.
New business. Uh, forty-four Hamilton Street.
Thank you, Damian. Damian, you on? Laura? You're on. So did everybody read that's report?
Yes.
Yes.
There's a quick email on this one.
Herman.
Damian?
I'm here. Hold on one second. Just getting it pulled up.
Okay.
These are all different windows. Should we?
Well, that's.
Pass this around? That'd be good.
Um. Yeah, I guess we can pass these around while we're waiting.
That's three, a nice, slow for a worker.
Yeah. But there, so these, these are the windows we looked at.
Can you guys see me? Trying to do the video.
I can hear you.
Here we go. We got it. Hi. So Carrie, I actually sent a few other pictures over to you as well. Um, I don't know if you received them just actually earlier this evening.
Oh, yeah. I don't have access to my email out here.
Okay. And I can't share a screen?
Yes, you can. Give you that.
Oh, that would be great.
That's what you're talking about.
That's the storm to their.
The storm inside. Yeah.
There you go.
Fabulous.
Thank you. Okay, great. So, um, my name is Laura Tuman. I am here as the agent and also as the general contractor. My husband's the general contractor for the property. Um, the homeowner, actually, this started coming about because the homeowner wanted to actually upgrade her HVAC system in the house. Um, an old system doesn't function great, wanted to upgrade, but thought it would um, upgrading may not be a good thing until some of the other, um, and issues addressed in the house, such as air coming in and going out pretty quickly and easily, um, especially with the windows. Um, I can, you have some of the photos from the exterior of the house. I have a couple um, that I'm just going to share, just kind of close-ups. And Zach and Judith probably saw this because they were on site. They came with me and we saw them on Friday. Thanks for meeting us there.
Yep, thank you.
So I'm just going to, this is one, this is just to give you a general sense of, you know, the condition of some of them up close, um, as well. So that's just one. And then if I can pull up, that's going to let me pull up this one too.
That's true.
And some of it's on the exterior screens, but it also, um, some of the sashes, you know, are in great condition. Um, either. So those are just some super close-ups. I just wanted to share, um, with some of the board members who were not on site um, last Friday with us.
We've only seen one picture.
We only see one.
Okay. Let me see what I can do. Okay. One more. All right, let's try this again. This is it. That's the second one, right? There we go. Another one. And then I'm, stop, screen share, and I'm just gonna share one more of that. I just, a few different parts of the window. Um.
Yep.
Okay. Um, so you know what we were proposing, what we came on the application to do was, uh, proposing to replace the existing windows, uh, the windows that we were, um, opposed to replace them with rights. Um, we had a house last year that, uh, over on Division Two, a sixth division. Zach remembers that well, I'm sure, um, where we replaced the windows, um, uh, with wood rights as well. We feel like that project came out really good in terms of having new windows, but still having, maintaining the old style, um, and energy efficient as well. So that was what we were proposing to do at forty-four Hamilton. That was pretty good.
Can't, you, you just can't.
Have, have, have you seen, um,
I don't know if he saw my email, because that was just to.
Oh.
Okay. So, so basically, he is saying here that of course he toured the house with you inside and outside. He looked at the windows. Um, and feel that these are part of the historic feature uh, of the house, uh, based on what's in the, in the National, uh, Registered Nomination Form. And that you should think about an alternative, uh, because some of your windows even have the original lots. It's his recommendation that, that you pursue the, or the board request that you think about installing interior, interior storm windows. And, and I guess repairing these windows as much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Repairing the windows that have the rot.
Right.
That can easily.
Some, I don't know all the pictures, but a few of those pictures were actually the storm windows. And arguably, I think we all aesthetically, you know, those old fashioned exterior wooden storm windows,
Uh-huh.
you know, do detract from the appearance of the house. That was a conventional, you know, before the aluminum s, you know, storms, uh, storm screen things were invented. But, uh, there are now very successful interior installations which address the heat loss. Not only if the sashes, which I don't believe these are, if the sashes are a little wobbly or ill-fitting, which they might get, I didn't really observe that here. But, uh, also with a single pane of glass in that old sash, there's a lot of heat transfer through that. So the installation of an interior panel accomplishes that sort of air pocket, which forms an insulation barrier. So it's both. Uh, and I found, you know, there was a lot of old hardware on those sashes. I think the point I tried to make when we took our tour is that in a house like this, which has very little architectural style to it, uh, one of the ways that you could date a house is by the surviving features, which in this case are the window sashes. And they're all there, the entire house. There are two over twos. So they are an indication. We did look at some doors. Of course, this board's not concerned about your interior doors. But we were making some distinctions between the way the doors were fabricated to date the house closer to about eighteen eighty. So there's a lot of interesting architectural features there, but from the outside, which is what you're dealing with,
Uh-huh.
it really comes down to the window sash. And if they're replaced, even if from the street, you say, well, they look the same. So what, you know, so what's the problem? The problem is that when someone comes along in thirty or forty years and tries to date the house, they're going to be looking at windows the date from two thousand and twenty-four, and they will not provide that person any information as to the date of the house. So the objective here, I think, if the conditions are such, which I believe they are, is to preserve as many of those original features as is feasible. And, you know, but understanding that the homeowner has a right to a comfortable existence in his or our house, uh, I would propose, uh, at least researching interior storms, which are easily pulled out, replaced, much, much easier to manage than the exterior. That was my recommendation.
Appreciate that. Now, are there other options? You know, we'd like to also potentially, other options like it, are there, would it be a possibility to look at replacing just some of the windows maybe? Um, and not others just based on condition? Um, you know, I, we'd like to continue conversations with the board um, on other options as well that we might have here.
Well, that wouldn't be my recommendation, but that's up to the board to wrestle with.
Yeah, I would say no. Um, I, repair, repair, um, you know, wood can be repaired. So, um, it's a historic house.
But I think what we'd also like to do is, you know, i- it not just the, the windows, the sashes, but everything in terms of repairing the sash cords, uh, the jams, everything would have to be looked at a little bit too. I don't, you know, it, it, it's, it's, I don't know if putting those interior, uh, storm windows would solve the entire issue. Um, and it, you know, I'm sure it would help, uh, to some extent. Um, you know, I, I, I haven't seen any, I, you know, we would just like the opportunity to look at some of those. I don't, you know, do a little bit more research on those, uh, interior storm windows as well. Um.
So I think that's fine. If you do the research and we can, we can table this until you've done your research and, and you can return.
That'd be great. And, you know, it's, the site visit with Zach and Judith was, it's great and helpful and kind of some nice discussion, right? About the house and some of the features of the house. Um, you know, it's obviously, you can tell that the owner is not interested in, you know, taking the house apart and making it not look like it used to, right? Um, it's been maintained the way it has the charm of the house, um, which obviously we um, and so that's kind of the path that we want to continue on, but obviously trying to manage, you know, having an energy efficient house at the same time. Um, so yeah, we would just love to continue conversations with the board um, with regard to that.
Okay.
Perhaps you could go window by window and see if there are some that you feel are beyond repair. And then come back and say window five and eight are beyond repair, but we can repair all the others. Or something like that. And then we'd have to probably go look again.
Right.
But my, my feeling is that you should think about the fact that you will probably end up having to redo all the windows and keep them and not get new ones. But who knows?
That's the recommendation that was.
What did you think of the condition when you, you did this?
There, there were some, clearly, really more than the wood, the paint is the problem.
Paint.
Yeah.
Paint.
So they would have to all be.
People tend to keep painting the windows without ever reversing that process. So over time, the paint builds up. Uh, and that, and that, that seizes the window sashes so that they can't move anymore. Uh, so, you know, it's, there's some labor involved in that.
Yeah.
Sometimes, you know, paint, moisture, moisture leads to rot sometime, you know, that as well.
But I didn't really, I didn't see any rot in the windows. I saw, there was the one that you showed the picture, which is the corner of the upper sash, and the bottom rail is sort of falling off a little bit. Well, if the paint were cleaned off of that, you could take a hammer and tap it right back in place. But there's nothing wrong with the wood. It's just that over time, the paint has kind of pushed it out of alignment. So uh, anyway, you should take it, take a look at all of them, and I think the condition is relatively good.
Yeah. So generally speaking, you're replacing, you're, you're not replacing any windows probably.
So, I, I will make, do we, do we pass on my motion to table this? I don't remember.
Yes, well.
I will move to that we table this for a future date.
Yeah.
And allow you to do the investigation. Um, and then as I think you said, after you identify which ones you think are substandard, um, Zach would have to make another visit. So, um, can I get a second please?
Can we just deny it? I don't understand. Can't we just deny it?
That's basically what we're doing. We're sending to her that, this is a second chance.
Okay.
We're table, and she's going to go back.
Okay.
Yeah. Do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, are you the Sammonds? Okay.
I can admit it to you, good night off.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
Bye.
Well, that's what I mean. Please come forward.
This is forty-one Robson.
Mm-hmm. June, there are you.
Hey Cruz, I am. Um, pick a bright, uh, rock, a friend of family's. Me.
And I'm Holly. I'm the designer.
Hi.
I have a bag.
Thank you. Do we sing? Do we approve forty-four hands?
No, we tabled it.
We tabled it. Right. Back in the folder.
She's going to go back and look at the windows again.
Okay, we put this back in the folder.
And she's going to look at that one. Uh, interior storms.
Yeah, thank you. Pardon me. Pardon me.
This are muted.
Yeah, so, so thank you. So what are we looking at?
So this is up there, we have existing house.
Uh huh.
And at the bottom, we have what would be the existing house, uh, with hatch and then the addition um, on top and to the side.
Okay, you wanna tell us about the materials and, um.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. So it's all gonna be hardy, uh, smooth plank siding.
Uh huh.
Uh, seven inch exposure.
Yep.
But it's gonna be, it looks like you're gonna have two different sightings on the, the original and the, and the new sections.
It's actually all gonna be the same. We just use a different hatch to show you what is the new portion.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
Sorry.
How many square feet is this?
So it's the old.
Twenty eight, uh, the original house or the new? No, everything. Total together is twenty eight seventy seven. Okay.
That's different from what you said.
Twenty eight seventy seven?
Yeah, the lot coverage is three thousand four hundred eighty-three.
That's the lot coverage.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. So the existing GFA is eight hundred eighty-five. The proposed is two eight seven seven. So, um. It says that there is four inch coverage, plank coverage. Four inch exposure.
Uh huh. It should be seven inch.
Seven inch exposure.
For the heart, yeah.
Where the hell do you go?
Um, yeah, I mean, as far as the uh material, we are, they would like to have. Um, you know, as you can see, they, they would like to have the hip roofs. Uh, they actually, they wanted to have flat roofs. We still in the direction of doing some sort of hip roof so that we can kind of give some sort of uh
Character.
Character in some visual room. Um, so they were okay with that. Um, in, as far as the uh materials, we're doing four hundred series Anderson windows. Black asphalt roof and a, um, I think say either a fur or mahogany door, front door. They're gonna keep it natural and also mahogany deckings.
Let me ask you, is the flat roof on the left? I'm sorry, June.
Go ahead.
Uh, are you gonna leave it? Is that gonna become a walkout deck or something?
No, no, that's, that's just roof. Like it's, it's all hip roofs. So they're all roofs together.
On, on the ground floor, that's a hip roof or that's a flat roof?
That's a hip roof.
Sounds a little low.
It's a small.
It's a small.
Okay.
I, I see it now. It doesn't, it doesn't read that way.
Right, okay.
Flat. It's hard to tell. I got it.
Got you.
Okay.
Are the windows, um, casement or what are they?
They're casements, yeah.
Uh huh.
Okay. Can you show us another elevation? Okay, so this is the reverse side, I guess. Okay.
And again, the hatch on the bottom is the existing, the white on the top and to the left is the new.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm guessing that was the backyard we were looking at? No?
Correct.
Okay.
No, these are the sides, yes. Yeah, and June, you can appreciate hip roofs. Uh, I think they, they.
A little more. Okay, so. Okay, so it's gonna be gray with black frame and the black roof. Um. I don't have any comment. Does anybody else have a comment?
Um, so I appreciate you trying to add character to this design, but I honestly think that maybe the homeowner may be onto something that this could be a more modern design. Um, I think the design, please take no offense, is poor the way it is right now. Um, it feels like a modular commercial office or something. Um, and I'm really trying not, I, I don't wanna be insulting. I just want to be helpful. Um, I, I have a problem in general with the way that these kinds of new windows look. Um, but I think that if it were a more modern, flat-roofed style house, that those windows would make more sense. Um, if we were gonna go with this hip roof design, then I'd wanna see more traditional um, fenestrations of windows. Um, but I, I think you could do something very pretty and sleek uh, in a modern design. And um, it might also be helpful since this is a corner lot. It, it just might be an interest, interesting way to go.
Shaw, you have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think Megan makes a really good point about the hip roof. Makes it feel with the, with that particular type window, it makes it feel commercial, not residential. Um, so I would either do the flat roof with that style or a hip roof with a different style window. Um.
And what would you think about, sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
Adding, if we added grills to the windows, do you think that would add a little bit more of a residential feel and would help with the roof?
Grills, like, like panes?
Yeah.
That's what we were.
Well, it looks like the owner is going for a modern look. It's, I think what they're trying to achieve to some degree. Um, because those casement windows suggest a more modern, and, and I mean, if you're gonna go that way, that's, that's fine, but go that way. You know, go full on modern if that's what you're doing, you know. Um, I mean, I, I, I like, you know, I like the pop-up upstairs. I mean, that makes sense to me, sort of the way you have it laid out, but it doesn't. It, I think I'm having difficulty and maybe because I'm new to the board, um, kind of picturing this. And maybe I don't have enough information to wrap my arms around it. Um, I, um. Yeah, I mean, I, I think go modern if you're going modern. Don't be afraid. I, I think I would agree. I, I, um.
At these point, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Either this point, because one of the issues we also had, and I had bring this up to him, was that, um, we don't really like in the second floor, it's kind of tight, because he needs, you know, his, um, he has a son. And they have twins now, so they need, they need bedrooms and they need, he says, I need storage. I need, you know, uh, places to put my kids' uh, uh, stuff. So I said, okay, so we, we, uh, we met with them at the house. He has their big family on a very small house right now. Um, so I would have to use about the second floor to put my mechanicals. Uh, so I don't have, so yes, he was, he was going for, for, for the modern.
I'm, I'm sorry. Why would you have to put your mechanicals on the second floor?
Because I need to put a furnace on the second.
There's no basement?
There's, there's a basement, but there is no, like, there's not a clear wall to really bring, bring dock work. Big dock work to feed.
Why, why not use heat pumps?
Uh, so we need splits.
Yeah.
He doesn't, he actually blames someone apartment right now that has those, and he hates those. So, he's like, uh.
It's a look.
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it's a thing. So, so I said to him, I actually give him that option, because there's also the things. He says he doesn't like the fact that they have to be controlled separately and it's just like, it's a household where it's my control, because everyone, every, every unit has its own control. So they get mixed up and now he like, you have to understand that I have twin grandchildren. And they are, you know, I love, but so.
So in your hip roof is where your mechanicals are, right? So then if that's the case, keep the hip roof, but then do something different with the windows.
Okay.
So that it matches, it looks less commercial. Yeah.
Okay.
Since we know we have to have a hip roof, let's try to make it more traditional rather than modern. I mean, I like the idea of modern also, but if he needs, if he needs a space under the roof, then
Okay.
um, try to make it more, I don't know.
More tr-.
Traditional, yeah. Less modern.
Less modern.
I mean, little windows with mulleons, maybe even shutters, who knows? I think I just.
Liz, I just, Liz, I just sent you the actual survey, not the site plan.
Yeah, oh, okay. Um, so they, they may require, um, a variance. They have to check with the building inspector, but they might need a variance for a, a structure in a front yard. Because this lighthouse lane is a front yard. And then also, um, just, just to remind the board, like, I know there's been a lot of testimony tonight about family members and how many family members and twins, and the board's really not permitted to consider um, who is going to live in these houses. It doesn't matter. You're supposed to consider the architecture and compatibility with the village and the historic district. And I'm really saying that for the edification of, of the people appearing before you as much as I am for you. You already know that. But I just wanna remind people that that's not something this board's permitted to consider is, is how many people are your children or your grandchildren or your growing family. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Liz.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, so.
Let me see the picture of the house again.
Existing?
I mean, if, if we're talking about it, it'd be nice to look at it.
The setbacks, I think.
There.
It's a little of setbacks. We, we checked with the building inspector already on, on the setbacks. Uh, because we do have two front yards. That was, that was already, um, checked with the, uh, the current inspector, so we're.
I'm just gonna have a look at it one more time, because it, it, it looks like you have the patios and the front yard.
Adds for the pool. It's an accessory structure in a front yard.
And it, uh, accessory structure is in the front yard. You have accessory structure in the front yard.
Oh, uh, that's all existing.
The pool is existing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, so all, all we're doing is, is the house, but we're not touching, we're not touching, we're not touching anything else, yeah. So we're just, we're, we're just reading on the house.
Okay, I just see a lot of wasted space on the second floor. Don't you think? I mean, I, I'd, I'd build all the way across the top of that to, to, all the way to the left.
Oh, we can, because we have, uh, perimeter limitations.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, so we're, we're maxed out on what we can do based, uh, on, uh, yeah, perimeter laws. We can't really come this way. That's what we.
Maybe if the upstairs windows were a little smaller, I'm not sure. They, it seems like it, they look slightly top-heavy.
Yeah, it's the windows that.
Yeah. I think.
Yeah, so we could, we could make it a little bit smaller and pack reels to it. And we're not.
And, and the casement is for the children's safety? Is that what it is?
Again, he was, he was trying to go
Modern.
Hmm, a little bit modern. However, he called me a couple days ago and he's like, I'm allowed to add reels. So he sent a picture and I'm like, I like them too. So, uh, I, I think, I, I think there's, there's, uh, there's a potential, uh, solution here that we can work with, uh, with him to, um, to come to a, um, um, for more style, pretty guys.
Great.
Good. And is that the front entrance right there?
Yep.
At the bottom, okay. So it's a door and then those
Two side lights, yeah.
Two side lights that are big, same size as the door on these?
Door, yeah.
Interesting, huh?
Mm-hmm.
And what is the, what makes up the railing on the stoop?
Material for the railing, yeah.
It's still, uh, that's, um, that's, uh, aluminum brick, right? Black aluminum brick.
It looks like you could put two, maybe something that comes over that front door that says this is the front. I mean, I think this is why it looks, it looks commercial.
I think, I think it has.
Yeah, because it's like you step up to.
But there is.
There's an awning there?
Yeah, this little rectangle right above the door is like a.
Another.
Oh, I see it. I see it now. Okay. Because it looks like you. I don't see it at all. And then. Okay. Oh, I see. I see it now. Oh, okay. Let me bottom right. Again, that's very modern. And if you're, if you're trying to switch over to traditional, you might put a more traditional cover on the door. And I'm also thinking the railing. Um, maybe the railing should be a different material if you're, if you're going traditional.
Yeah.
Uh, rather than modern. I mean, all these are little modern details and we've decided that it's not gonna be modern. So.
Like worm shed roof.
Yeah, yeah, and, and uh, not a metal railing.
Okay. You know, going back to the earlier elevation you were showing us, and I asked, why don't you use more of the flat roof? It'd look like you have room towards the sky plane on your right-hand side. You wanna go back a couple? Is Carrie still there? Yeah.
That one?
Yeah, you just passed it. Isn't that the sky plane line there?
Oh, this one here?
On the right-hand side, yeah.
Yeah, but we can't come here because we have.
Has the pool there?
No, because we have setback limitations, because this is, um, lighthouse lane, yeah. Yeah, so, uh, yeah, the house can really grow.
So you don't wanna go to, to the zoning board to discuss this?
I think he wants to kind of move, you know, it's quick, you know, like he's, like he's, he has very, very limited space, like their kitchen is tiny little thingy, like, I think.